Today is Tuesday, May twenty first, first two thousand twenty four, the time is six oh one P M. Like all the regular village board meeting to order myself, Mike Capper's president.
Chris Moreno here, Caleb Guy, Brian Secker here, Frank Roll.
Tony, Tony current on Zoom.
Chris Dubeck on Zoom.
Stand for the pledge of allegiance. Pledge of allegiance.
We will flag the United States.
For which stands my nation under God, in the name of this law, the liberation of ourselves overall. Public comment on agenda items, minutes per person, fourteen minutes per topic. You can say your name and your address.
Yep, I'm Margie Metzendorf, and I live at seven ninety eight Bumtree Lane in Somerset. And I've got a short message. I just wanted to say thank you to all the folks that work on public works. They've been dynamite at picking up lawn clippings and branches and whatnot at our place. And a lot of our folks are in my age group, so we don't have access to pickups or ways to get rid of that stuff. And they're dynamite good.
Thank you, Margie. Thanks.
Thank you.
Anyone else for public comment?
Dave Waller, four ninety Forest Drive, member of the planning commission. A little concerned with what's going on up at the school. In reference to the modifications on the holding pond. Over two years ago, I talked to Bezek about the first time they did that holding pond. They have very steep slopes going in. It's probably the two to one slope. And they drop off into the deep zone right away. So I look at it as this, this is a school property. I do believe that we have jurisdiction on it and what they do, especially now that they have done the modification and broadened the scope of it. And I question why there is that large storm grade coming into it. So I'm not quite sure. So anyway, so. If a young child climbed the fence, which is, you know, about four feet back from the edge of the pond. But he gets over the fence and it's still at a pretty steep slope going into it. If he goes in that pond, a young boy or a young girl, he's not getting up. You know, that's a clay bottom. It's slippery. And I can just say that in some of the work that I've done in parking lots and to contain all the runoff we have done. As we had to build holding ponds and maintain all the water flow on our properties. Every location that I've done them in, in like the years of construction. We've had to build shelves around the perimeter and then kind of terrace it down slowly. So as the young child's in this holding pond and walking into it, you know, he's up to his knees and he gets nervous and he can back out. But these holy ponds are in the drop off right away. So when you look at these ponds out there as being on the planning commission and they did a modification, I'm not quite sure. Why we didn't see it, why public works didn't see it. You know, and I've been told, you know, that we're assured that they have their permits in place, other state permits and everything do the work. But, you know, I'm just in question. So I'll leave it at that. If we'd like to have a discussion later. I'd like to hear from Chuck and his opinion and hear some of the opinion from the board. I do have pictures on my phone. I'm not a techy guy, so I can't put them up on the screen. But if you take a look out there and with that new storm grain system that's in there. If that's for field drainage, which never really had a problem in the past. Why couldn't you have done a surface tile system underneath it? And there's plenty of slope out there to get that water out that field. It would have been done. So, you know, I'm not quite sure why there's that much work. But yet the seriousness of the slopes of these ponds. I do think that's our issue. If a kid dies in there, the school district gets sued. We're paying. Citizens of Somerset pay it. The township school members pay it. So that could be a liability issue, but for a good attorney, that's gonna be a green case.
Thank you.
I'll leave my comments.
We'll try to move that up on the agenda. If you can stick around then, Dave.
Yeah, I'll stick around. Thank you.
Anybody else for public comment? One, one, twice. The approval of agenda.
Make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Frank, a second. Further discussion on favor.
Aye.
Capital Investment Group presentation.
Thank you. Bill Albrecht here with Cat Best. With me tonight is Trevor Bowlen, partner. Nick Bender, he runs our projects, our construction projects. Roddy Weck is our property manager and then via remote location as Brett Burkard is our operations. And I think Brad Elmer's on there too. Brad's with Baker Tilly and he worked with our finance when it comes to new projects and so on.
Hold on. You got two people in the way with that. If you want to trade and control, delete to hold up. Shut that down.
This is the flag box.
What was your name again, Phil? Albrecht.
That's where I'm at.
Donnie, can you, Donnie, when you're seeing that, are you seeing the presentation or are you seeing that blog on there?
I am seeing the presentation.
Okay, so he's not seeing the blog, so. Okay. You've got ours here in front of us. Everyone else should see that screen. It is annoying.
It is.
Okay. I did not bring out a copy of that. Normally I have backups of everything, but it's funny, thank you.
Where it says all tools, we'll get that one. We slide it over. Yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
So we'll kick her off. So thanks for taking the time to meet with us. We've been working with, with Bob and Chuck here for, I don't know, about eighteen months now. Going through, it was about eighteen months ago, it was vetted. The new Ted district area, we're talking about the multifamily. I think I came in and I met with the planning commission with Mike Lozere, I believe. And went over kind of our thoughts on what can go there, what should go there. So now we're able to meet with bill to board, so thank you. Overview Cat Vest. You wanna, well, I guess just to kind of go through a few things here is the overview of Cat Vest will have some relevant recent projects. Proposed project overview and then we'll have some discussions from Q and A. So Cat Vest overview. So back in two thousand and seven, Cat Vest was started. And that is, it started as a construction company and a multifamily company in Eau Claire. We've been around for seventeen years from that perspective. And I started in real estate roughly twenty seven years ago, doing construction, development and so on. Trevor Bowlen brings a finance background. He was in banking for the past twenty five years. And my other, our other partner, right now, he was a partner of mine in, he's got an irrigation background, but he was more on the land side. We recently brought in Brett Burkard, my cousin, as our operations guy, as one of the owners also too. So. You want to go to the relevant recent projects? I think there's.
There it is.
Mill City. So.
I'm only seeing the capital.
Stop sharing.
So one of our recent projects, you guys maybe have heard of or have seen is over near Richmond, the Mill City Apartments. That was built in two thousand twenty three. It's eighty eight units. Over three buildings on about a five acre site. It's a mix of one and two bedroom apartments, garages. And then we have amenities of a fitness center, a pet wash, dog park, maintenance station. And several walking trails and so on around there too. One of the things that we, that we like to do is to make sure that all of our communities are a living place. And recreating place type communities where you can raise your family and you can live throughout your. Different stages of life within our communities. In New Richmond, the Mill City Apartments is one of those. We currently manage roughly around a thousand units and own around a thousand units within our portfolio. We put on about a hundred a year apartments in the area. We have projects down in River Falls, Eau Claire, Triple Falls, New Richmond, obviously. One of our River Falls projects, actually, if you want to. The next one is Peregrine Terrace. So Peregrine is similar to what we have been proposing with Bob and to build in Somerset. Peregrine is a ninety two unit apartment complex in eights and twelve units. More of a townhome type style, fits more of a, not quite an urban feel. As like Mill City does. Mill City is, those were thirty unit apartments. And this tends to fit this demographic better and we can kind of phase it a little bit better too. We don't want to pop in thirty units instantly in Somerset. It doesn't make sense, but we can phase in some eights and twelves. Peregrine Terrace was built in two thousand twenty two. That was ninety two units. And that's right down across from the high school in River Falls. Next one is Estover. Estover Terrace, that's currently being constructed. That's in Monomony. That's is a hundred and thirty six units of multifamily. And that's also very similar to what we're looking at doing here in Somerset, the eights and twelves. That's over a larger area of thirty acres, but we also put in single families and twin homes and a large seven acre park and so on on that one. But again, that would be very similar to what we're looking at doing here. We build eights, twelves and thirty units. We try to specialize in certain things. Over the years, I've built different kinds of apartments in different, different cities and so on. And we've narrowed it down to the, to the eights and twelves, fit in certain a ten and eleven acre area. Or if we have an urban type field, we'll do the thirty units or twenty four units. But that's what we build. We find land that fits that. We don't try to put a, you know, a square pegging around a whole type thing. And we found it very, very easy, a lot, a lot easier to, to do all of our calculations, you know, based on costs and so on. If we can have some history of what these buildings cost, so. Next one. The current, that's current, currently building, going up in River Falls, just on the north side of River Falls. On thirty five there. That is four units or four buildings, two thirties and two twenty fours. Now in that one, that's a hundred and five units. We have some garages available. We have a fitness center, bike maintenance station, dog park, bike trail access and so on. And as far as the amenities go, in the last couple, we've been able to put in dog parks, turf in, in, down in. River Falls and also in New Richmond, we put a turf dog park in. Seventy percent of tenants have pets, so we do cater to that. It's also, since we're talking on pets, it's also important for us that we keep our places really nice. We put in irrigation, we put in landscaping and pets can, can somewhat, you know. Can not be tracked, but can kind of hurt some of that stuff. So.
Just for tenants?
What's that? Dog park? It is. Yep. So we also have a, a, a program called Poop Prince. So if we do have an area where there's, there's a problem, Poop Prince, yeah. Yeah, it was, so I've also built in Colorado. So some of these things have, these ideas. Out in the, kind of the Port Collins area, I made this, I was able to see some of these new things coming on. So Poop Prince was, was one of them. Where if you had a problem animal as far as somebody leaving waste. We can take the waste. So we swab every dog and every animal that comes in there. So if we have an issue, we can send that in to Poop Prince and that tenant will get a five hundred dollar fine for leaving their feces out. So it's one of those catchalls that we try to maintain. We put a lot of money into landscaping with irrigation. And we try to make sure that that's maintained. So that's one of the things that we do. And the tenants love it. We haven't any, anybody that does complain about it. Maybe the one guy that got sent in last week, but. And then other projects. So we also in the past, well, we're sort of shores. That's a hundred and thirty six units. That's the eights and twelves again. We also own our, within our portfolio, we own a restaurant. Down in Altoona called Cowboy Jack's. We have a hotel over in Monomony and then we have some storage units we just built in North River Falls also. So we do do some other things, but our main product are the eights and twelves and the thirties and twenty fours. We have some reference letters. We have two of them here. One from, I believe, one's from Monomony. And the other one is from New Richmond. Of communities that we've worked with in the past. We've always partnered well with communities. You know, we, we do what we, what we say we're gonna do. And that comes true when you can go back to any project that we've ever done. And we, when we came in and told everybody we're gonna do, we ended up doing. And they've all been, you know, very, very happy. So. And, and, and they, they should be because, you know, because we're happy to, to be able to bring some of the stuff that we bring. The Ted district. So what we're looking at doing this is in Ted Five Northwest Concept. If you can see in the center there and that depiction of how the buildings are laid out isn't how it's laid out. The next one, the next slide will show that, but it does show the acreage that, that it takes up. It's roughly around, it's about ten acres, about, yeah, ten acres. Growing Wings is to the west. And then there's a vacant commercial on surrounding the outside. The overall site plan, you can see that's a series of eights and twelves again. We have a hundred and twelve units proposing, h twelve. And you can see that there's a, a private drive down the center. And then there's a public road that's built around the perimeter that fronts on our property and fronts on. Future. Villa Jones property with all the commercial on the outside. So our project would bring in all that. So you'd have future commercial availability on that side of that.
Shell project.
Yeah, Shell already. Next one, oh. There's also different. Whenever you bring construction to a community, there are different phases of that. And I think it's important to discuss that, you know, what that means to a community that we, that we come in and build. This is per a hundred units. So direct and indirect impact of construction, local income is around seven point four million and a hundred units. The businesses, whether that be buying, you know, materials or whether that be, you know, the, the local. Restaurants and so on being used. Local wages and salaries, the tax of, of all that, and then the local jobs that we come in with a hundred units. There's a ripple effect. That's the spending income. That's when the, you know, we pay. Whether it be the lumberyard or whomever it is and the wages that those. Employees make, where do they spend that? Well, that's the ripple effect. That's the local income again, local business income and the wages, local taxes. And then there's the ongoing. So once you have a hundred units within a community. There's the local income again and local wages and salaries. So you can see that there's, there's a, there are phases. There's the construction phase. There's the spending of the income from the, from the employees that work on the project. And then there's the long term gains from local communities. And I think it's important besides a lot of, a lot of times when we come in. It talks about the tax revenue, which is important. But there's also these other things that come into a community when, you know, you're able to, to bring, this is a hundred and five meter project in. Besides also being able to have house employees for businesses current and future. And, and, and we think that's an important thing, especially with the Somerset's key location. So what we do is we have a ninety mile radius out of Triple Falls and Eau Claire that we build. And we try to focus on communities ten thousand or more or less. And also. Communities within key locations and Somerset's one of those. Baldwin's one of those, Prescott's one of those, that we also try to find these that are in the path of growth. So that's why we're in Somerset was we think that this is a, is, is a great location as far as the path of sixty four coming through. And then also we recently just built some eights and twelves over on, in New Richmond, just on the outside there. That it's a forty eight meter project called West Town Homes and that is a hundred percent rented. So there is a need and we're happy to be able to bring it to the communities.
Any questions? You have an in-house property management company?
We do. Yeah. So everything we do is in-house. We, we have in-house construction department. Nick's the project manager on that. And then we have two superintendents and two assistant superintendents. On this project, we would have a superintendent and an assistant, and then Nick would run the project as far as a project manager. When it comes to the in-house leasing, Roddy runs that. Roddy has a staff of around eight to ten right now. And we do our own maintenance. We do our own leasing and that's all in-house too. So we develop. We construct and then we lease and we hold them. So.
Do you have your own subs or do they come from other places?
Other places. We'll bid it out. Normally local. So we built in New Richmond recently and we, we use local guys around that area. And it just kind of depends on where we're at.
How many years you hold the property?
You know. We've held them for, I mean, I've had properties for over ten years, ten, twelve years. This one, you know, I can't say exactly how long, but probably at least ten years. You know, when we, we have investors that invest with us on these, we don't own them a hundred percent. We're the majority on most of them. And, you know, when we do the performers, they're all based on ten years. And not to say ten years is the end. I'll be all, we sell them. It just, that's kind of our goal.
Our, our goal is not to build a flip. Let's stop. Our goal is to hold it as a launcher burning acid.
How much will rent be for the one bedrooms and two bedrooms if they can help?
I would estimate twelve fifty to thirteen fifty, the ones and two bedrooms are at fifteen hundred range.
How do you guys come up with your rent prices?
A lot of it, we look at local competition, right? So there hasn't been anything in Somerset built for a while like this public. So it's hard for me to use comparisons of, of the local economy, right? The local market to establish those. So we were going to outliers of. New Richmond, River Falls, kind of use the peripheral, anything that's new and it goes Roberts, you know, what, where are they kind of? So by no means are you looking to try to give rents equivalent to Hudson. You know, there's going to be some disparity. But you're trying to be in, in that sphere of, I'll be frank with you, with construction costs where they're at and interest rates where they're at. It is, it's. I can't use market rents that currently in some stuff making it work.
Yeah. Any further questions, you guys? Thank you very much, Bill.
Thank you. Thank you.
Committee appointments, discussion, possible local appointments. Lead commissioner.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thanks, thanks. You've been doing.
Daniel Newman is no longer with Public Works. She'll as of right now can. Put that to all of Public Works until the new hire gets established. Board of zoning appeals. That will stay the same with Ken Lehman, Dan Benas, Steve Warner, Dane Belter, and as one of the agents, Michelle Boebe. So I think. Not playing. Oh, yeah. Planning, planning commissioner, Dan Benas and Shiloh will stay on. Police Board of Review, Michelle Boebe will stay on. Fire and rescue should have been updated. It's myself, Ken Lehman and Dave Warner. The Economic Development Committee. Ken Lehman's in the vacant position. The Main Street Home Committee will stay the same. Joe, Donnie and Chris. American Disabilities will stand the same. The housing one, Ken will switch in for Julie Lang. And then I will not, Bike and Pedestrian Trails Coalition. Motion for a second?
So Paul, I have a question.
Well, if you're, we have to make the question. Except your point with.
So I have a question. We had a, there's a new business on here to. Amend ordinance for who can make appointments. So I'm wondering if it would be possible for us to table these appointments? And then we could vote on the new ordinance amendment. And then if that ordinance amendment does go through, then the trustees can make appointments.
I think the ordinance was for officials.
Yep, and board committee positions.
Commissions. Whatever the numbers. I mean, you said that. It can be paid. That's your question. And that's something that the board will have to vote.
Right.
Are there any ones that are not able to hold meetings because of vacancies?
There's a motion on the floor still?
I don't think there was a motion, Donnie. Can I make the motion for the changes as I presented?
You make the appointment. Somebody makes a motion and then you're in somebody's.
I'll move to approve the, the appointments as presented.
There's a second?
I'll second.
First and a second. Any further discussion? Are you not all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries for three. Consent agenda. Buddy want to pull anything off the consent agenda?
Mike, could you speak up just a little tiny bit for us with the old years?
Sure, Margie. Sorry.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
Is there a first? Is there a second?
Chris Dubeck, I'll second.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Oppose, same sign? And then can we move up? Since Dave Warner's still here, move up. H, discussion possible approval, stormwater pumping issues plus school property.
Is that a motion?
Uh, I don't, I'm able to, I'm able to make a, just do it without emotion. As the president. I guess, Bob, can you kind of fill us in with this? From my standpoint, I would have assumed it was all came before planning commission and the board before. Most of us got on here. But Dave's on the planning commission for a long time and didn't go from there. Donnie, did any go, thing go through the board for that school property stuff when you, the year before that?
Normally stuff doesn't really come to. The public works in regards to like approving permits or anything like that. There was no discussion that I can recommend, remember.
I can remember a discussion. This is not the, where the pond is now, but there was discussion probably ten years ago. That they, on one of the, or more than ten years ago, that, that their stormwater could contribute to. The Larry Forrest Pond, but after that. They had to withhold the water on their site per anyone else.
Would have to be for anyone had to drain it normal levels to the Larry Forest Pond. That's all I can speak to, I don't know what's happened or transpired since then, if there's been any initial reviews or village requirements on the pond. I don't know, but that's was. Probably back to when the elementary was built.
Bob and Chuck, can you speak to this?
Yeah, we had an initial meeting with the schools engineer back in January, um. Chuck and um Eric Thompson was from Stormwater Division at MSA. We went through, uh, went through all the comments and. A lot of the work being done is for the future turf football field because. The turf is considered impervious, so that actually adds two acres of impervious plus there was an extra land for. The track, uh, the school auditorium was negated because that was a parking lot. Um, well, again, we. Shared the comments with them, um, they went to the permitting process, they got those and they started. And the only difference. That pond has then a lot that come through plan commission is we. Take ownership of the ponds, in this situation, the school retains ownership of the ponds. Um, so your question of should have gone through plan commission, the village board. I don't have a good answer for that.
But doesn't that, doesn't that pond also run off into uh, the pond at Larry Forest? As an over, as an overflow?
I I I think a couple of things to clarify here is, yeah. With the new improvements, the pond has capacity to handle that, that was. We looked at that already. Um, the soap going down is three to one. And then there's an eight foot terrace, you know, eight foot bench right at the normal water though. And then it's um. Two to one after that, you know, after that terrace. That, you know, as. You know, if I was designing this new today, you know, we typically put a, a ten to one. You know, ten foot bench, these are eight foot benches, but you know, I don't think there's any specific requirements in your ordinances, but it does have. Some of those features that you pointed out, you were concerned that they lack.
Yeah.
Yes, please.
It does slightly. But the old pond, as I told Beazik two or two years ago. Was not designed correctly. And I said, it's a life safety issue. It's school grounds, young kids, a fence line that is partially around the, it on the north side of that fence line, it. Behind the fence is sloped down and it is immediately sloped down into the pond if they get to the edge of the pond. And I said that, you know, for the work I do, when I'm running projects. If I see a situation, I become live. Especially if I put it in minutes. So I told Beazik, I said, you know, if you're looking at this as a school, you know, and I I believe they did. Twice working the pond, did built the pond once, tried to make some correction the second time. Um, you know, and I had told him, and then again, we had to change administration, Sharon Donnelly's there now. Um, you know. These appear online. If a kid goes over that fence and gets in that pond, he's going to slide down, it's all play, he ain't going to get out of it. It's going to drown and die. A liability attorney is going to sue us. A firefighter comes out to feel his gun hole, jumps over the fence, jumps in there thinking that it's only a four foot, six foot deep pond. He's not going to get out, now we're rescuing a firefighter. You know, and I talked to some firefighters, they don't like a fence, but it's better than nothing.
Well, there's two hundred minutes, I don't recall what kind of fence it is, but some communities don't put fences in because then it's harder for people to get out.
Correct.
Let's get in.
Correct. That's why firefighters don't really care for fences.
Yes.
But anyways.
So are you concerned, just so I'm clear, Dave, the slope going down to the normal water level or the slope after the bench? That.
The bench is on one side of the pond and then a little bit on the northeast or northwest.
Right at the normal water level, so where the pipes go in, that's where the bench is, so, you know. You know, practicality that, you know, they won't, you know, they don't immediately touch the edge of the water and. Drop down, it's a, it's a, it's a slop.
On the north side of it, it is, I I can't hear what the grade is, but it drops off pretty dramatically. It gets to the edge of the pond and it literally is a two to one slope.
That below, you know, that's below the normal water level, right?
Well, it's, the water level's been pretty high all year.
Cause I I guess I can only go after what's, well, yeah, I mean, there's. Pounds are tended about. You know, you need the, you need the depth below the normal water for the, you know, for the treatment.
Correct.
You know, so I I guess. I guess my point is, is that. You know, I'm looking at their existing contours, what I've been provided. And everything seems to be in order.
I don't hear it so.
Okay, well, that's, then there's a discrepancy when I'm looking at.
Right, you walk around that pond, the shelf should be, the bench as you're calling it, I call them shelves. It should be around the whole pond, so that if a kid gets in there, he is able to. Get out before he gets in trouble.
So there's a bench around them?
Uh, not exactly.
You need to go. Maybe, maybe it's something that Bob and I can go look at.
Dude, where is the bench? Well, it's. That you can't see right now, but it's on their, their plans. I think you should go review it and then look at it, because if you, if you look at it, especially in the high water. Dude, it's right here. But we're looking. I know, but it's, you walk out, you look at it, and it's not, doesn't look good. And and the other concern I have of it is if. They're doing. Future work. Um, I'm not quite sure why they did that extensive for storm dreams, um, runoff system into it. Into the new pond where they built it in, and if you look at that, it comes down the shelf and it drops down again, but. It it's all perceived pretty dramatic, but if they are doing it to drain tile of the field. Why would you do a standard field drain tile? Subsurface and drain it off into the runoffs around the field, which then drained down in, I mean. Looking at the referendum. I didn't see any of that work in the referendum. So I'm questioning, well, why'd they put that that much expense into it? You know.
Gentlemen, is this something you guys can work with Mr. Wallner on and for child safety reasons, so it's pretty important that we.
I mean, you got to understand that that pond is not completely as it stands right now, that's still a work in progress, so.
Can I, can I ask a quick question here? Um, you, you guys had a meeting in January, you shared your comments with them. Was it, um, was any of this mentioned in the co- in in the, that comments, have they, did they take your comments and? And uh, uh, you know, uh, enact them in their engineering?
Well, I guess, from the perspective of. Your question, but. You know, the pond's properly designed from what we're observing. So we didn't question anything, we didn't have any concerns related to that portion of it.
Well, if they're expanding runoff to that, uh, they've, they've. They've uh, expanded that, that drainage pond and that clearly runs off into. Uh, an overflow which carries into uh, the village property and that's the only thing I would be concerned about is. Is now you got that much more runoff going into that pond and then overflowing in, is that going to cause? Uh, uh, any kind of concerns that we need to be worried about from a village perspective?
That pond has the capacity for these improvements.
How about a Larry Forest though? So is this pond is going to take on considerably more water? And more water is going to flow downhill into Larry Forest Park? And then it's going to go underneath the development, my development and go out into Gap River down below on the country's property. Um, at what point are we going to hit any thresholds that the DNR should require us to do more pond work to trap overflows? I mean, I I'm not quite sure how these codes work. I tried to look it up a little bit on the DNR website. And as far as they got is that they need a phase two permit for this pond system and I didn't quite get the wording about a whole phase two permit forms. So, but. At what point of the volume of water? Is a secondary pond below Larry Forest can be required to filter the water before it gets to the river?
I think they're going to have to take your questions and have to dig into it a little bit farther and.
Yeah, we got to take our water resources, that's, that's what we got. We'll uh.
And you may have a report back next month and. Or memo to us before then.
Have you seen all the permits, Bob?
I showed them to Dave.
Yeah.
Yeah, Bob has been very helpful for me. But my biggest concern though is if you look at the slopes out there, it's a school grounds and. I mean. A project I just finished here up last year. They held me to a higher level of standard than what's out there right now, there needs to be a legitimate shelf. At the watermark and then another shelf built at the high watermark. You know, so that if a young child did get, and this, this is a manufacturing company. You know, but it was stepped off before you got to the center of the pond where the depth was.
But the village uh, send a, a letter or something to the uh, school board, I know we're talking about two different kind of jurisdictions here. But could this, uh, at least the, the village maybe send a letter to the, the uh. Uh, school district and and ensuring that they're conforming with all safety and and uh, regulations with regards to. Shelving and and storm waters for uh, safety purposes, or is that something that needs to be put on public safety for a later date?
Donnie, I guess if I can jump in here. Uh, you know, I I I'd say let's, let us get a common understanding of what's going on here before we write letters. You know, so we can kind of. Engage your lot of resource folks and get our arms around it. And then, and then we can see, you know, if we still have concerns after that. Uh, or, or, you know, or bring those concerns, even if everything is in alignment with. Yep. Standard engineering practice, if we still have concerns, you know, you could consider writing a letter saying, you know, yes, but it's still a school.
I I think, you know. Brad, I learned this term attractive nuisance, you know, it's. Even though it's there, it's and all the protections can be done, it's still going to be. Attracted by students to potentially, so we have to. They're on the side of safety here and I think we should, you know. Have a chance for Bob and MSA to do the review and then. You know, and reach out to the school when appropriate, are you guys all good with them bringing it back to the board next month?
Thank you, we'll provide a report as we get information coming up.
How much bearing do we have on that?
Which one?
How much bearing do we have on that anyway?
But I'm guessing this probably shouldn't went through the. The board approval and planning commissioners like any other project?
I think it should definitely come to planning permission first because we receive the water downstream. And we tend to be our responsible for it, so if there ever is a larger capacity coming in, at what point? Do we have to do additional ponds? So like I said, Larry Forest Park is held, five minute water all year. That pond before they ran their pump system, uh, was pretty high too.
And that was our concern many years ago when Larry Forest Pond was built and that the school runoff was just. By default going there, that. This would come back up and be an issue again.
Paul, is there any reason why? That the school, their building wouldn't have had to go before the planning commission was pulled in?
Well, you have a code that handles stormwater compliance. And it sounds like. The plan of food for this pond. And permits were issued and I think the question that I've been hearing is was it built? For these plans? We don't know the answer to that, see.
I'm thinking the whole construction project, like the contract and if they're doing a new building, would that have to go through them?
They're going to need permits through the village.
Would that overcome through the village?
I never saw, not planning permission.
But there's the common concession that it's a state.
Building.
The, you know, it's a, under state jurisdiction for inspections that they could bypass the local municipality and. That's, I don't think exactly right.
Tony, can you speak to that at all? Do you know that, well, that works?
Uh, we have an issued building.
Someone else, can you guys look into it for us, Bob? New business discussion possible approval, St. Louis County Board of Adjustment meeting on May twenty-third, two thousand twenty-four at eight thirty AM. A village delegate. This is for. Intermountain Township, Mr. Appicant, Steve Gottman, Rivers Edge, we don't have the old Somerset camp for putting in. Twenty-some seasonal campsites. We'll just just ask if anyone can go down there, we need a representative or.
Well, because you're welcome to attend. To make your opposition known, so I think it's just pointing somebody to attend.
I, I, but I remember reading it. So, can we say nothing? Is that allowed too? Sometimes that's.
I'd be willing to attend if you want or have representation.
So do we have to? Even if we are just as a board or. Consent individually?
Well, I think there should be some sort of message.
Bob, what are your thoughts on?
I mean, I think for my idea, I think.
That's pretty, pretty close to the village, don't you think, for us, us to not at least kind of have some kind of say on it, it's going to affect. Some of the uh, new developments on that backside uh, that we just put in there with growing wings, I don't know if that's gonna. If that's good, if they're going to have some play on that or not having, I mean, that was kind of one of the reasons they moved into that area. Is because of the quietness and now we're going to have, you know, potential camping and stuff like that over there, not saying that it's going to be bad. I'm just, uh, has anybody thought about that?
Steve, what kind of camping you're thinking down there, you have mean actual like cabins or you having RVs down there with hookups? Or are you just going to have a spot for people to hang out and?
So on year one, it's just like seasonal sites.
Just with hookups, pop with electric and water or just electric? Same rules apply at, that apply at Rivers Edge are going to apply at this campground, lights out at certain time, you'll have security? This will be a family campground?
So, a weekend stay from last year, I guess.
Then how's two, is how's tubing going to work there then? I I'm assuming you're going to have some type of tubing? Or they're going to get off there or that, is that going to be affiliated with Rivers Edge or are these going to be two separate entities?
Separate that's the TV, so. Tubing pick up this same same spot we've done the last few years. Nothing to have to camp on, somebody wants to go tripping at the campground, they can drive up to Rivers Edge.
But you'll have security over, overnight there?
Overnight, but yeah.
Do you have security overnight at Rivers Edge Draino?
We have onsite management, yes.
Yeah, someone there at least, there'll be someone at the campground?
Yes, and so as you're aware, I have eight acres that are in the village and I have a caretaker in that. On site. And controlled by St. Craig County.
Chief Tragic, what are your thoughts on this? You're mute if you're talking, chief.
I kind of thought we were going away from camping, so I'm not sure what my feelings are on it, but. Any discussion, guys, or just uh?
We haven't, we have no juris- We haven't, we have no jurisdiction on that, correct?
We just have some input, whether we are kind of for it or against it, since it's adjoining property.
Hmm, the only thing I could say is that we have no jurisdiction over it, so if their if their their problems. Don't get addressed, then the the county has to uh uh address it. Um, and that's the only thing that I have to offer on that, and I'm not saying there's going to be problems, I'm just saying that. There's no way for us to be able to, you know, ensure that the problems get taken care of because we don't have jurisdiction here.
We're gonna be music on that site?
So there's one thing the village could do if they go, run to is make a suggestion for a condition. That may help alleviate the issues or any concerns. Would just be a suggestion, if you want to go down.
In the conditions as well?
I would suggest a condition. No music after.
They are becoming towns pretty strict, don't they? Like, I mean, you're familiar with that, there's all in code.
No music after ten o'clock and a decibel level like. Sixty or something like that, that's crazy low, but. I mean, I'm not, I'm just saying you're. You wouldn't, you know, that's all. So I think some of that is addressed, it's just. I don't know what we can object to. Per se, other than our concerns that it's. You know, there would help to.
If you wanted to express a concern.
Well, adjacent landlords would be the other side of the uh river, correct? And those are all in the village, right?
And the bluff, the bluff's residents.
Right, so they would be, you know, coming to our. Um, board meetings saying, hey, you know, we got problems with this, either somebody's coming trespassing on their property, I don't know, you know, I mean. No, we don't know what what's gonna come up, and so I guess that's the only thing we could say is. You know, it's if it happens, it happens, uh we'll just have to deal with the issues as they come up. Unless we say, you know, we'd like to see these things or or at least a meeting or something like that to make ensure. You know, cohesion of, you know. Our abilities to get along and 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 make this a success for both sides.
Are you open to and exchange property in the village?
Maybe, some fun. It makes sense.
Discussion, possible approval ordinance amendment two dash three dash two A. Go without sending anyone. I I'm actually gonna make a motion done. Eight eight, make a motion that we do not send a delegate to the May meeting.
But it says that you may show up, so I may show up, I may not.
But will you be speaking, will you be speaking on behalf of the of the village or or be speaking on behalf of yourself? As a resident?
If I do go and speak, I'll be speaking on behalf of myself.
But just because there's no one going in, it's representing the village.
Eight B?
So um I put this on the agenda, um I believe that. Um, there's a lot of good people that might not necessarily get appointed for these positions, just as a a fact of just one person. One person can't know as many people as everybody. So I think we're we're missing out on um a good chance to even get some of these these folks filled out. I was kind of hoping it would be for the appointments for all the committees, so that's my mistake, though, on not clarifying that. Um, so that is why I put this forward, and that was my thought process behind it.
I I I just have one quick question on this, um if you have or other people have um ever. Been denied the ability to get an appointment because uh. They they put a a name forward and it never came up uh uh and was. Brought forward as a recommendation and a nomination and approval?
I've never had a chance to nominate anyone.
I'm I'm saying, uh, you you know, you don't necessarily have to nominate somebody, but everybody that I've seen since I've been on the board. Has been put forth to the president and and brought up for the uh discussion with the full uh. Full uh board approval. Which is, you know, a- anybody that has ever recommended or wanted to be nominated. And that's what I'm saying, has anybody been denied? If you're saying you have nominated anybody, I just, I think we're gonna have. Two or three people competing with who wants to nominate who? Why not bring it to the president, let the president uh, you know, put the nomination forward and and we as a board approve it under the current ordinance?
So we just went through all of the appointments, I'd be more than happy to revisit all of those appointments and bring my. Suggested um people forward if we want to. Re-look at uh who was appointed on those committees today, are you? Set a motion?
Br- Brandon, you have every right to bring all anybody forward if you have some suggestions for consideration of the president to appoint.
Yeah, I, so that's why I voted no, and I was asking if we could go back, but it got it got approved before I could put any of my folks forward. So I would have to reconsider though the appointments on these boards, because there's some people that I would like to see changed on those commissions and some people I'd like to see added. Donnie, just speaking from passenger, uh not just not this, just this current board, but historically. The trustees aren't always solicited for who is nominated, it's just announced to appointments are and. I think if there was the ability to have, um you know, they. Uh, it is in for presidential appointments and it in. And but the senate has the right to advise and consent, you know. If there's a chance to advise, I think that's really what we're getting after here. My, that's, at least that's what I've seen, I'm I'm not speaking to, I'm speaking for myself, and Brandon's the one that brought this forward, but that. That is historically is what's been. Frustrating to me for many years is that not always given the opportunity to. Advise in uh uh names and we're forced. Come to a point where every everyone's dominated and. You vote up or down and so. That is what I see as a historic problem is that. The board doesn't necessarily have a chance to advise, they do consent, but they don't get a chance to advise.
Okay, so if you have multiple um nominations, then. Uh, you know, I guess how does that, how does that roll out? I guess that's a question for Paul, uh under the, under the state statutes, it it shows that. That the 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 board can nominate and and uh confirm, so. Um, in in your experience, Paul, how does something like that? You know, work where I I always thought that, you know, anybody wanted to make a, hey, this person's might be interested and have the president. Go and talk to them, kind of, that's what the, that's what I've always. Shared as my role as a as a trustee, if there's somebody that. That's expressed interest or anything to me, I've always putting it forth to the president in the in the past with Doug and with uh with uh. Um, Sean and 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 even with Mike, so I I don't know. Uh, why you would not wanna, if somebody was asking for or looking for, you know, possible. Um, appointments to a a position that you wouldn't want to put that forward to him for consideration.
Agreed.
Yeah, you know, both. Both of these are allowed under state statute. The most common way is what you're doing now. You know, the village president is village president for a reason. And this sort of, they they had the the board, they're also a trustee. You know, if you want to change the ordinance, to say, you know, a board member. And and has to appoint someone for one of these positions, that's fine, and the board votes them up or votes them down. And if they're voted down, then you go to the next one, the which president can nominate someone. Any board member will be able to nominate someone, that's not what I typically see. But that's an option that you folks have.
I have no problems taking suggestions, because I like people are jumping up to sit on some of these committees, so.
I'd be willing to see if there's just some way to have a. An advise process in in ordinance, not necessarily even changing that to what's proposed, but if there's some. Formal advise process that has to be considered, you know. Like before the names are brought forward, the month before, everyone gets a chance to.
Definitely want want some help and some input.
I I'm just, I'm just trying to find, throw a so- a solution here on that. So I know, I know, Mike, it's it's, I've seen past little presence, it's hard to find people to fill these spots. If you're willing to revisit this, you know Kathy Ness says she'd be willing to serve on the planning commission.
Already checked out, well, and and it's already been proved, so I think going forward, we can definitely discuss it, but.
Well, we can re-vote on it, can we do that and say go back on agenda?
A point of, point of order on this, going going forward, do I think?
I'm talking here, point order. Um, can we go back on six A and re-vote on that? Can I make a motion?
Well, you're gonna.
To table it?
It's gonna have to be from someone who actually voted yes to include the motion. Reconsider, it can't be from someone that voted no. I'd reconsider it.
Make a motion to reconsider.
I'd make a motion to reconsider.
Brandon, hold on a second. Further discussion?
What's the discussion on, uh what what are we reconsidering?
Opening back up.
If there's other people that. To advise or to put on the, is in the positions. I think that's, Mayor wasn't aware that there was more than other people that wanted to get on.
Brandon, hold on a second.
Donnie, it was a motion to reopen the uh. Six A.
But, Mr. Chairman, we have, we have just on the agenda right now, we have ordinance amendment. Now we're going back on the agenda for reconsideration, are we gonna table ordinance amendment two, three, two A? Before we go for reconsideration, this is my point that needs clarification from the. This is the clarification I need from the uh, from the uh, from Paul.
I guess technically you should handle what you have in front of you now, and then you can vote on your reconsideration.
Brandon, make a motion to table. That one, the one we're on. Two dash three dash eight. Two, that's two A.
Hold on a second.
First and second, table of ordinance amendment for two dash three dash two A, and further discussion? All in favor? Oppose him, son?
Alright, back to that.
Not, we want to reconsider. So who did we want to reconsider them?
Make your motion.
Make a motion to.
Reconsider?
Reconsider.
Brandon, hold on a second.
First and second, any further discussion? All in favor?
I.
Oppose myself.
Brandon Cronin make a motion to appoint. Um, Kathy Ness in place of Shyla Williamson on the planning commission.
Second.
First and second, any further discussion?
The only discussion I have on this is, um, you know, is Kathy uh sent, submitted a letter or anything to the board? Um, you know, like Ed Ryan had just said, he wants to have some uh. Uh advisement of it, uh is is Kathy willing to sit on this board? Uh, right now, we're hearing from you on this as a as a recommendation, um. So if she sits on the planning commission, is that something that, you know, we are able to um, you know, consider? What 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 uh, what else or or is it just Shyla?
Um, I would also like to appoint.
Point or, I don't know if we can't do what you want to do right now, we just tabled the ordinance, so. I think we table this to the next month, we bring forward names.
Yeah, that would be very interesting. And I think the discussion was that the board wanted some discussion input as to who was in the beyond these committees, not necessarily. Going to nominate.
Sure, sure. So let's table the committee appointments. And give us a month so we can find candidates, Fran Crum make a motion to table six A.
First and second, further discussion? All in favor?
I.
I.
Oppose him, son, so.
Uh, under discussion, or we are done with this?
It's done, is it? So I guess what I would suggest is board members, you have someone contact them. Give them to submit some letter of interest or whatever to the. The president, and then the decision can be made next month.
Yeah, I wholeheartedly agree, I think uh, I think um it's worthy of at least getting it in front of the president and everybody else.
Discussion possible approval, ordinance amendment seven dash two dash nine eight.
Oh, yeah, okay, yeah, I brought this one forward, this one was just a blip, so before within the ordinances, we just had it. If they were delinquent to just um the village. Um, we want, oh, we could deny a license. I went back and actually changed our language to mirror some of the language that's actually on the town board. Uh, to make sure that not only are they paid paid up to the village, but also state or the county. The logic behind that just is, you know, the people who are executing these licenses need to be responsible people. You know, we had accidents on the river, we can't have people underage drinking. And the other part of it is just economics, um if you're not paying your taxes, you're not paying your bills. There's probably a good chance that someone else could be making money on this and then actually um making some revenue for the village, so. Uh, that was just the the thought behind that was to sure it up a little bit and make it mirror the top chip.
Just one quick question on that, um I I'm not necessarily an uh opposed to it. I was, is uh, so we have some um. Companies that do business and and ask for permits and stuff in the. In the village, uh and you know, like. Cause like tubers or something like, a tuber business would come into town, how would you be able to uh ensure that they are? You know, maintaining all the laws, don't have any debts or any or or any kind of outstanding. Uh, fines, fees or or stuff with the state, that's my only question, yeah, I'm not necessarily unopposed to this.
So I think it would fall under Tasia and Andrea, unfortunately, I'm sorry.
This is only related to liquor licenses, not tubing or anything else.
Yep.
Any other kind of license, it's only liquor licenses.
So, so why wouldn't we expand that to all of them?
It could, but that's not what it's trying to upset.
I understand.
Uh, Brandon Crum make a motion to approve seven dash two dash nine uh updated ordinance.
I will say that. And just for clarification or discussion, the only changes are delinquent and unpaid to the. To the whole thing.
Uh, and also the. Uh, and also the state and. No, that was not.
Call your state, wasn't it? How do you know?
Be underlying the, the elections across.
Correct, yeah.
That's the way I understood it.
Pretty sure it didn't have that.
No, it doesn't.
It didn't have the state or the, it's only village. But yeah, this is, this document doesn't have the actual.
All in favor? Discussion possible rule ordinance amendment five dash two dash one, fair and after, and G, fair and H.
So I put this on the agenda, um, but I think I might have jumped the gun a bit because. Uh, upon further review, I think the issue is better discussed at the next fire rescue commission meeting before coming to the full board, so I apologize.
Is that a motion to table?
Yes, can we table that, please?
All in favor, any further discussion? All in favor? Oppose in sign, once we carry this discussion possible approval, ETZ process update. Bob, are you ready for the ETZ update?
Wet n' whistle.
Uh, so currently we have, historically, we've had a lot of ETZs come through that. Our random.
What's an ETZ? Sorry.
Extraterritorial zoning.
Which is a mile and a half, right?
The tool we can use to object to, um, towns strong enough, uh, land use subdivisions, what, whatever.
Oh, there used to be like a map, are there like an official roadmap? That used, back, so if it was a development that was in our line for a future village road. It was something we could object to, just as an example.
But there, there's two kinds of African territorial jurisdictions. One is flat, one is zoning. So unless you create a, a mini with the town, go through a whole big process, not talking about zoning approvals here. Cause I don't think that has ever happened, so we're just talking about exercising the.
Okay, that, that process has been attempted. I think in the eighties, the nineties, early two thousands, and all we got was stalling. My opinion from the township, the village was eager to proceed with it, so.
So this is more procedurally, um, so we have some ETZs for a, a civil. Six acre lot to be subdivided into two, that's a mile and, mile and a half away.
Yeah, we've seen a few.
So our requirement now is for them to pay the fee to come to plan convention. Um, attend the plan commission and have a plan convention decide if there's any objections to the ETZ. And then advance whatever decision to the board. Well, there's a cost involved with that, and some of these, um, seriously, we've had. Black commission meetings I have gone for two minutes, and it's because there's only a ETZ there.
Right.
So at the board's discretion, um, a suggestion would be, when the ETZs are submitted to the village. That the, uh, commission chair, uh, the village engineer, the building inspector, the public works inspector, um, director. I'll review that and then decide there's no objections. And or there might be some objections, so this should advance to the plan commission. Um, for them to deliberate. That would just save, I feel, a lot of people, a lot of time. Because there's not a whole lot of ETZs we object to. I mean, I, I can't think of one.
I agree with you. The only I would request is that, that process be made available to our report. That is then sent to the village board, it's, uh, in tou- in total.
So it would still advance to the village board for final ratification. But it would just not go through necessarily.
I just want to make sure that things are just being approved without. Everyone being informed. Would that require an ordinance update, or is that just something?
No, our ordinance just states if ETZ goes to play a commission. There's a twenty dollar, we'll have fifty dollar fee or five hundred dollar fee. Plus a five dollar and ten dollar per lot.
So, so it's giving you kind of the right to wait.
Can you write us a memo applying that process and we prove it then?
Yep.
Uh, so we have Brandon Cron make a motion to approve the ETZ process approval update, uh, based on. Memo provided by Bob.
I would like to see, I'd like to see the memo first before we approve it. Um, I'm perfectly fine with, uh, you know, it's everything that sounds like it makes a lot of sense. I'd just like to. Get the memo in front of us to approve it prior to, uh, putting the cart in front of the horse, so to speak.
Uh, that makes sense. I'll rescind my motion. And we'll, I'll make a motion to table this.
Yes, table till next month with the, uh, pending mo- uh, memo from Bob.
First, is there a second? I'll second.
Second.
Second, further discussion, all in favor? Discussion possible approval, twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five license applications. And we have to go through these one by one, you know.
You can say a list, Tim.
I, I'll make a motion to approve. The twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five license applications as presented in F one through thirteen.
Brandon, for one second.
These were all reviewed at public, at public safety.
And I do have a question, one for discussion. For General Sam's, if I'm reading it right, they have. All seventy eight acres in as a licensed liquor bonus. You know, beer garden application.
We know too, I think.
That would require a six foot high fence around both property if they wanted that, and beer garden, and they couldn't have amplified music. And then for the Sam's Christmas Village, they have amplified music, so I don't know if it's a, a typo or. Damn, that dude wants all seventy eight acres and it's a beer garden.
Was this discussed at, at public, uh, safety on that one at all, Ryan, or, or Chris?
In general, my question to the police chief and the rest of the committee was, was there any changes from the year before? On any, any of the documents? And that answer was no, so, um, that's. Um, I guess the discussion that went on with the specific documents, that's all.
Then under our ordinance, you'd have to have a six foot high fence around all seventy eight acres and no.
Yeah. You know which ordinance that is?
So, can we do this, or just, uh, approve this and, um. Table the beer garden ordinance until we get further clarification from the applicant?
And you can approve the rest of them.
Yes.
Seventy dash two dash nineteen.
So I'll amend my motion to approve F one through thirteen. But tabling.
Five.
The beer garden permit for General Sam's pending further clarification.
Brandon, for one second. Further discussion?
That was the only discussion I had on this was the same thing Ryan said, Ryan, that there has been no other changes in the other ones that I could see. Um, but I just wanted to clarify that, uh, when you, in your meeting that you, um, had in public safety. Was there anything other than, like, that, that was, uh, changed from last year in these, in these license permits?
Other than maybe an address or a phone number, you know, demographic stuff, but that, nothing that was substantial matter.
When I'm, when I'm reviewing this list again, I don't remember there being a beer garden at Apple River Liquor. Last year, but I don't have last year's available to compare right this second.
She did not have one last year, she did the year before.
Oh, okay.
And that, and that, and that, and, uh, Andrea, to clarify that, that the year before, that this is the same request then?
Yeah.
And that would require six foot fence as well.
Wouldn't they use it?
Thank you for your clarifications.
Further discussion? All in favor? It was everybody. Discussion possible approval, twenty twenty four, twenty five, liquor license agents.
I will also make a motion to approve. G one through nine, the agents.
Donnie, for a second.
First and a second, any further discussion? You're not on favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Myself, yes. Unfinished business, discussion possible approval, building inspector fees.
Move to table until.
Motion to table. For a second.
It was, it was, it was tabled till this meeting, so we're still looking over and we tabled. The discussions of the other appointments, so. I'm, uh, I'm asking for a motion to table on this, too.
I'll second that. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Oppose? So discussion possible, building inspector fees.
I'll make a motion to table. The building, uh, permit fees until December twenty twenty five. When, uh, it is appropriate to review the contract with the building inspector, considering we just. The board as a whole, as an entity, approved these fees just four mon- months ago. I, I just have a problem with approving something four months ago and then changing things. Yeah, you just, the principle of it. Well, what does it say to our contractors when we are constantly changing things on them? That's, that's my issue with this.
Brandon, for one second.
First and second, any further discussion?
The only discussion I have on that, uh, uh, fellow board members is that. Um, it is definitely a cost increase. I pointed that out to them, there's been an election, there was a new, new board that was brought in. Um, and I was putting forth that, uh, that information to the new board. That it is a definite cost increase if the board wishes to, to continue on and increase the cost of, of inspector fees to, to his residents. And carry on with that motion. That's all I have.
We'll call Chris Marino.
Hi.
Ryan?
Yes.
Myself, nay.
Brandon Cron, I.
Donny?
Nay.
Chris Dubach?
Nay.
Convened a closed session. Pursuant with Wisconsin statute nineteen point eight five, parent one, parent F, considering financial, medical, social, or personal histories. Of or disciplinary data of specific person, preliminary consideration of specific personnel problems. Or the investigation charges against specific persons except for paragraph B applies, which. If discussed in public, would be likely to have a substantial adverse effect upon the reputation of any person referred to in such history or data. Or involved in such problems or investigations. Operator license appeal pursuant to Wisconsin statutes nineteen point eight five, parent one, parent E. Deliberating or negotiating the purchase of public properties, the investing of public properties, or the conducting of other specified public business. Whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session. Or tax increment developers agreement with Voyagers LLC. We'll call vote to go to closed session. Chris Marino?
Is that a motion?
First, first and second, any further discussion? Oh, we'll, we'll call votes. Caleb?
Hi.
Ryan?
Yes.
Myself, yes.
Brandon, I.
Donny?
Hi.
Hey, we are going into closed session at seven twenty six P M.
Thank you, everyone. Thanks for coming in.
Thank you, guys.
All right, and we're.
Reconvened to open session at eight oh one P M. Their motion?
I'll make a motion to, uh, deny the operator's license for case of all one. But we invite him to reapply. At his earliest convenience.
Second.
First from Ryan Zekard, a second from Caleb, any further discussion? All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Unanimous, motion carries, who wants to make the last motion?
We'll do.
Second. Brandon Cron with the first, Caleb with the second, further discussion, all in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Great, thank you, guys. Eight oh one, you're all of yours. Thank you.